The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mr. Demodica, second by Mr. Dennan. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries four to zero with Mr. Duffy, Mrs. Teal, and Mr. Salvatore absent this evening. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the regular meeting, 8:13, approval of minutes from executive session, 8:13, and student handbooks for all schools. Pleasure of the committee on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Fiorella, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Demodica. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries four zero. Next item on the agenda is a report out of executive session meeting from 8:27, 2015. We had one vote this evening, and it was a student promotion retention decision. The committee denied the superintendent's recommendation on a four to zero vote. Next item on the agenda is a vote to sail the minutes of the executive session.
So move, ma'am, chair.
Motion by Mr. Demodica.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorella. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries four zero. Next item, superintendent's report. Dr. Thornton.
Good evening. First, up the list we have handout in front of you looking at enrollment for opening day. I'll take you through some numbers right now of where we are at this moment. As you know from our website, we closed enrollment this week and we'll open it up again next week and lock it down for opening of school. So on the sheet you can see Ashton School, which is told right now, are 253 students, EF Norton, 427, Community School, 574, Cumberland Hill, 339, Garvin, 399, and total 1992. At the bottom also you'll note there are eight more items that came in today that will be loaded in tomorrow. So we'll be at the 2,000 mark. Going back to last year, this time we're around 2,038. So think about really how that's different. I'll look at a community for one. There's one less section of kindergarten in a community, for whatever reason. Also, you get a factor in one more year of the charter school or Merle Kennedy roll out, if you will. Although this year I'd point out, it was a smaller net loss. We're right now approximately 23 kindergarten students going to BVP. At the same time, we had around 13 students come back from BVP. Different rates right now, really, at seven, that kind of thing. So a net, let's say, 10. So overall, yeah, we are down. I know, I think Channel 12 or 10 ran something last week around, we're now losing around 20 percent of the students. We're down maybe 1.5 percent, you know, give or take 2 percent. So we're not down. But we're also getting more enrollments in still. We have a whole line today coming in. So I'm not sure that's our final number. We'll make it more next week. That's K5. Also, on the sheet you'll see the word "closed." That what it means right now, with, you know, closed, no enrollments for the classrooms, how that works is if someone now, I'll look at Ashton kindergarten, it's closed right now. That's at the cap, if you will. If someone came to town now in the Ashton area, we'd place them probably at the next closest area possibly. BF Norton, which is at 17, 17, 16 each class. That's how that kind of works. So that's the elementary. If you turn the page, the middle, north, we are at capacity. Even today at around 3:30, we looked at numbers, you know, really trying to, you know, work with, you know, although all the numbers there. Couple folks still on a waiting list who would want to get in. There's still some more room at McCourt. So that's kind of how north looks right now due to the current stat model. Keeping in mind, things can change each week, whether we give a point two of this or that, if you do the specials, art, the music, that kind of thing. That's what it is right now. You can see also down below, there are five more registers coming in from McCourt. Have to put in the system. And the high school, we're now at 1298, but 10 more came in. So we're going over 1,300. Last year, we sailed up 1,340, 1,350 during the course of the year. So as you know, we're getting more requests over the school year for the high schools. So we certainly take them. So overall, that's where we are for enrollment snapshots of this day.
Questions for Dr. Thornton on enrollment? I just have a quick one. Is there, with the school madeups, do we know which schools in the elementarys have art and music? Often there was, we get to the point where art was on a cart. Have we expanded any of the schools to include classrooms?
Nothing has expanded, to my knowledge. We, if you look at page one again, we went down from 97 to 96 teachers. So pretty much what was there is what we had as far as we had art on the cart, still on the cart. We haven't had the ability to free classroom up. We've lost that kind of enrollment.
Got it. Thank you. Any further questions? All right, Dr. Thornton, next item is...
As you know from volunteer, many of you Chromebooks were passed out this weekend at the high school. I'd like to thank Mike Chandler, the teachers, and staff, everyone helping out. School committee, great rollout at the high school the last three days. Some more students will certainly still get there probably Friday or next week, but it's going off really, really, really well. I think out of all home machines I saw passed out, only one had a little hiccup. One machine with a screen was kind of grizzled, popped out quickly, and, you know, all set. So it's really, really going well. So I'd like to thank everyone again for helping out with the Chromebooks. Last, I'd give it over to Bob just for one more opportunity to talk about our speaker just coming on Monday. Bob?
Good evening, everyone. Just a quick update on Rick Wombley. He will be here on Monday. We, I actually had a conversation with him yesterday. And he, I think, will do a nice job of tailoring his presentations to meet our needs. So we have actually provided him some information about where we would like for him to focus his attention. He's doing three presentations, as you all know. On Monday, he will be presenting to all elementary educators and all special educators from 9 to 11. He will be presenting to all high schools, both middle schools and the high school from 1 to 3. And then we have a presentation in the evening for parents and educators from around the state. And I understand that there are some people who will be joining us from Massachusetts as well. So we're really looking forward to his presentation. And I think the most important thing that he will do is really validate the good work that's being done here in Cumberland and reinforce all of the work that we're doing related to standing space grading.
Any questions? So just a quick one. So if community members or parents want to enroll, they would just need to reach out to your office?
Yeah, we actually, I think we have, I don't recall what the last tally was. We've been really busy in our office with registrations. But I think, I think we were up to around 125 to 150 or so parents have expressed interest. I'm sure we'll get a few more over the next couple of days. And I think, I think we actually set tomorrow as the deadline, but I would imagine that we, that we may get a few. And that's fine. We hope that we'll get some more parents. But it is nice to see that we have so many parents that are interested.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is chairperson's report. School-town collaboration. We will be initiating a committee to look carefully at some of the five-year projections that we have for our school communities and are looking to have town support, school support, including administration. Maybe we'll have a student on the panel, as well as community members. We'll have some information about how folks can get involved, whether it's internally in the school or externally with the community. We would anticipate some of the discussion around that to be inclusive of some of the five-year budget projections or three-year budget projections and strategies in which we can address the circumstances around the funding formula winding down and how our town obligation can contribute to the overall health of the school district. I would also expect them to review what cost savings may be available. So we know with Rhode Island Association of School Committees, they're talking a little bit more about shared services. I did have the opportunity to meet with the commissioner last evening with the school committee association, and he also mentioned providing more capabilities for shared services for school communities. So that's certainly an option. I think it's also important that we have maybe a bit of a discussion around, you're often hearing what other school districts are doing. So one has a K-12 immersion program. We can't afford that. So what maybe will extend opportunities to other school communities to share with us what they did and why they did it. And to the contrary, you know, we've been able to put a fully kindergarten program in. So those are some of the choices that we've made. But to get a little bit more information about, you know, the decision-making that went behind it and the costs overall that other school committees have faced. So I would expect that we're going to hear a little bit more about that in the newspaper. We'll send it out through the school listserv. And we encourage community members and school, school families, school teachers, school administrators to be engaged with that. I guess we would call it a task force. What I would anticipate, the duration of that would be from September to November, early December, so that any of their findings can be considered by the school administration when they form their budget, which I believe begins kind of November, December timeframe. And I guess the only other thing I would like to mention was that the Association of School Committees did have forums for school committee chairs to meet the new commissioner of education. He seemed like a very approachable person. One of the things he mentioned was he would love to come out and visit with schools, meet with parents. So we would, I think it would be beneficial to us to extend an opportunity for him to meet, whether it's a forum that we host, or I think a school committee meeting might be a little dull for him. So we can certainly make those arrangements. He, the issues that were raised at the association meeting were around the areas of funding, park testing, and the impact of charter schools on schools. So those were really the three, three major topics that we spent most of the two hours covering. And that's all I have. So we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is report of standing committees' payment of bills. Mr. Demodica.
Madam Chair, we're on the payment of bills for this meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. And fiscal management and subcommittee update?
Madam Chair, fiscal management hasn't, since the last meeting, like, given an update that when we awarded the bid two weeks ago to the contractor to start the work at McCourt in Ashton, he is Harvey started doing the bathrooms at McCourt and replacing the asbestos tile at Ashton.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Just a quick follow-up. Do we know when that will be completed, those jobs?
The bathrooms will certainly go into the year because they have to rebuild two ADA compliant bathrooms. And speaking with Mrs. Card Barnet going Monday, she said they started doing the floors already, and they're promising her that they'll have it done by, you know, school staff.
Excellent. Thank you. Dr. Thornton, will we have to shut down the bathroom for the year due to construction? Is that how it typically would work?
There are other bathrooms there to use, but those won't be used.
I figured as much, but thank you. Next item on the agenda is policy and procedures subcommittee update. Mr. Fiorella.
Policy and procedures also did not meet this week. We will meet in two weeks, which I expect to have a very full docket. Number one on the list would probably be some tweaks to the attendance policy.
All right. Thank you. And I know that achievement and communications subcommittee update will be meeting in, subcommittee will be meeting in September. Next item is comments from the public. Anyone here wish to speak this evening? Everybody looks down at their watch already. Moving on, new business discussion and a vote to approve the 2015-2016 school bus routes.
It is that time of year. We have Paul D. here this evening with us, and we have the bus routes ready for the school committee's vote. So Paul, turn over to you.
Good evening. We do have the runs, the routes, who are actually posted on the website for the school department, I think either today or yesterday. We're still, we do have to make some tweaks, a couple of them. We've received some calls where we've seen there are some little minor changes we need to make. But we're looking at a great style. Most of the run stay pretty much the same from last year. We did have some growth in some special needs buses. There's some, not in the number of buses, but just the amount of stops and runs. Because sometimes it's not only special needs childhood, sometimes if it's not a district childhood, when you're moving a person from the community area because of no room down to Beethmore, and we put those on the special minibus areas. So that's basically what's been happening. Been busy, of course. But the phone has started to ring a couple of times today, and Mr. Demodica did speak to me about a couple of issues. We will take care of those for what we can do.
Questions? Yes, Mr. Demodica?
I just had one question, Mr. D. says the police department signed off on the...
The police department signed off on, well, I have not received a signed approval, but I did get verbal approval on Monday from Captain Fettig.
Any other questions? So just a question with regard to, at a level setting the time, are we anticipating no students? I understand the first couple of weeks are a little rocky. But we're, we're anticipating that all students will arrive to school on time once we work up the initial...
Yeah, there'll probably be, I'd say, three to four days where there may be some issues with timing, but those should work themselves out.
Mr. Fiorella?
Well, last year went very well at the beginning. The only criticism I have from last year is that buses actually left stops well before the time that they were allotted to be leaving the stop. In some cases, almost 20 minutes early. So kids would get to the bus stop, and the bus would already left. Can we make sure that those buses don't leave those first few days before the times are given?
And we will be doing that. We've told our drivers they have the state of the times. Any adjustments like that, we would probably, probably make in two to three weeks. And if there's going to be an adjustment to that timing, it will be posted on the website before it's actually done.
If the time changes, whose responsibility is it to inform students? Does the bus driver usually do it, or does the school notify?
Usually, usually we post on the website, of course, once the time has been approved to change. We've decided that we need to make minor changes. The bus drivers will notify parents at stops for the elementarys that, you know, listen, next week I'm going to start five minutes earlier. So, you know, but that's basically how it goes.
Okay. Any further questions? Pleasure of the committee. The agenda item is discussion and a vote to approve the 2015-16 school bus routes.
Madam Chair, make a motion. We approve the school bus routes as presented tonight.
Motion by Mr. Demodica. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dennan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries four zero. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Delivery. Next item on the agenda is discussion and a vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for the 2015-2016 school year.
Madam Chair, as I mentioned earlier, we've been overwhelmed with registrations. We do have a number of applications, and we'll have them for you at the next meeting.
Thank you. So there'll be no action taken on item 10B. And next item, do we have preconceived ideas of what students know and are able to do? Video, don't limit any.
We can start. We had our retreat last week. We had a lot of great highlights for the retreat. But one thing that stuck out to me was part of Rachel Sand's presentation. She had a great short video I'd love to have you watch. So if you could adjourn to the seats for about a 15-minute video, then we can certainly have a conversation. Rachel, if you could just kind of maybe, as they're taking their seats, kind of step stage where we're going to sit.
Yeah, what you're going to see is a young lady named Megan who has Down Syndrome. However, she's talking about what she expects out of the school department and the adults in her life regarding her progress towards adulthood. And it was, I thought of the video while at admin retreat because we were talking about growth mindset and not having set limits on students and really thinking about how do we move kids towards hitting standards. And this video popped into my mind, and we watched it as a group. It's four minutes. So it's not the myth of average, which is close to 20 minutes, I might say. This is 20 percent less. Which we know is Alice's favorite video.
Hi, teachers and mothers here at school retreat. My name is Megan Bogdanis, and I'm here to help you with your kids in your classroom with disability or homelessness. I am going to show you how to teach during my wedding. I began my career as a priest, and I was in school with a lot of parents. I asked my girlfriends for support. I learned with our experience in the book class. I became a cheerleader in the high school. I was the first cheerleader in a state with Down Syndrome, a cheerleading team with state, and we worked on the national football field in Washington, DC. Since I began out of high school, I was a fashion model in a forward dancing foundation, as you show. And I used to wear a lot of high dancing taught Asian wear. I have done a lot of effects. I now go to the virtual in high management where I'm going to be a public speaker. I have an eye skill. I have a lot of dreams. What I want to say to you, don't limit me. Don't limit me by thinking that I cannot work in your classroom. Don't limit me by thinking that I always need someone to help me. Don't limit me by having low expectations for me. Include me in all your students in your circle of belonging while you open a model as education. Think about how I have the same needs of students beyond my skills, beyond my work skills. I need four years to teach these skills beyond reading and writing. Teach me how to learn, teach me how to act. Think about what I need to know to be able to do when I leave school. How am I going to be independent in class? How am I going to be an independent in class? How am I going to be an independent and safe living around our school? Teach me to be an independent so after me become an independent adult. I need to work independently. I need to be careful myself. Don't limit me by teaching me to depend on others. Teach me respect because respect is good in a team. Owe me to respect behavior, expectation as our own classroom. Teach me how to behave and excel in class. Don't limit me by making me fast master. Teach me what you expect from me to have expectations, not impossible expectations. There is a difference, you know. You will work in lack of me. Good teachers teach and learn with their students. I will teach you all about yourself. I will teach your students about equality and disability. If you don't limit me, we will teach our school how to be an inclusive community. You, my teacher of the priest, is going to teach you how passion, love, and independence. And I will become a powerful pastor by being an independent adult. So please, don't limit me. My name is Megan Bogdanis. Thank you for your time today. Have a wonderful new school year.
I'll kick him into the beverage.
I told you it was four.
Rachel's going to talk for 12.
Four minutes, 18 seconds.
So what'd you think?
She's a rock star.
One of the things that we talked about at the retreat, which was great, by the way, we learned a lot together. But one of the things we talked about after seeing this video with Megan is how we so often have these preconceived ideas about what people can do and what they can't do. And I think when you hear something like this, it really, I think, in a good way, shatters those preconceived ideas. And I, you know, I think the growth mindset should apply to everybody. And that's, you know, one of the things that we talked about. And I think everyone at the retreat was so moved by this video clip that, you know, we agreed that everyone should see it. So I mean, I think Megan really has taught us all a lesson that we need to have realistic and high expectations for everyone. So in fact, my wife, Dr. Sally Mitchell, is the director of special services in Johnston. And I told her about this, this video clip, and she emailed Dr. Sand, and she's going to be showing it to, I think, the entire certified staff at Johnston High School. So we're looking forward to doing the same thing here.
Mr. Demodica?
Dr. Thornton, are we ready for TV tele to the high school?
TV tele?
Are we ready for TV tele to the high school?
Yes, we're running, running it up.
I think this would be a great first video to show the whole school.
Excellent. Thank you for sharing that. It was really nice. Next item on the agenda is personal recommendations. Mrs. Thornton.
Good evening. I don't have as many yet. Last week, or last two weeks. First, I have resignations for you. So I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the resignation of Judith Nangle, grade one teacher at Garvin Memorial School, Diane Payson, teacher assistant at North Cumberland Middle School, and Loriann Santropetro, art teacher, Systemwide, all effective June 30th, 2015, except for Ms. Payson, which would be September 4th, 2015.
Pleasure of the committee on the resignations? Motion by Mr. Dennan, second by Mr. Fiorella. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries four zero.
Next, I have leave of absences for you. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the FMLA leave of absence of Elizabeth Fellow, PE, APPE health teacher at Cumberland High School, starting August 31st of 2015, with an anticipated return date of October 13th, 2015, and the advice and consent of the school committee on the unpaid leave of absence of Christine Kinnear, kindergarten teacher at Ashton School for the 2015-2016 school year.
Pleasure of the committee on leaves of absence?
Madam Chair, make a motion. We approve the leave of absence.
Motion by Mr. Demodica, second by Mr. Fiorella. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries four zero.
And lastly, I have appointments. So I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the following appointments. Danielle Goshain, kindergarten ELL teacher at EF Norton, affect, no, they're all affect. She's a Step One. Veronica Choina, secondary English teacher at North Cumberland Middle School. She would be a .6 FTE, Step One. When I said .1 before, I meant Step One for the first one. I'm sorry. Taya Klosik, kindergarten teacher at Ashton School. She is a Step One, and this would only be a one-year position. Sarah Cohen, reading specialist at McCourt Middle School. She's a Step Five with the Masters. Robert Daniels, elementary severe and profound special educator at Garvin, who's a Step Five. Lisa Dancerow, school news teacher at Cumberland Hill Elementary School, who is a Step Five. Stephanie Hines, reading specialist at Garvin Memorial School. She'll be a .9 FTE, Step Five with the Masters. Ryan Lapre, secondary science teacher at North Cumberland Middle School. He's a .6 FTE, Step One with the Masters. Jerika McKee, early childhood special educator at Cumberland Preschool. She's a .5 FTE, Step Three. And And Kayla, my name is there named Salasido, grade-one teacher at Cumberland Hill Elementary School. This would be through the remainder of the school year. She's a Step Three with the Masters. Additionally, and this is a little different, which is why I just wanted to separate it out. Donna Marzakovsky, who's already a school nurse teacher with us, has agreed to take the nursing supervisor position. And so, we're asking you to appoint her to that position, which would include a stipend of $7,000.
Pleasure of the committee on the appointments?
Madam Chair, make a motion. We approve the appointments.
Motion by Mr. Demodica, second by Mr. Dennan. Any further discussion? Mr. Demodica?
Mrs. Foell, do you have any positions still left open for the start of the school year?
Uh, we do. I just received a reservation today, which obviously is not on. So, I will have an art position to fill, as well as we're still looking for a library media specialist. And I believe that that's it. We have, it may be a .4 APPE, but I think we have someone for that. So, very few positions. We're, we're in a very good position, thankfully.
Any other questions? All right. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries four zero. Thank you, Mrs. Foell.
And so, for the record, I just want to let you know that Lisa Dancerow and Sarah Cohen are both here in the audience, so.
Congratulations.
And just lastly, I had one fall coaching appointment. It was in your drive. We have found a JV tennis coach, who is Brandon Hanaway, who actually is a social study, a brand-new social studies teacher with us. It didn't impact it. He has experience with tennis, so we were happy that he has agreed. So, I'm asking for you, we're recommending that you appoint him to the JV girls' tennis position.
Motion by Mr. Fiorella? Second by Mr. Dennan. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries four zero. So, when you hire them, do you say so? Do you play tennis?
Well, teasingly, teasingly, we have new teacher orientation on Tuesday. Mister Mitchell ran it and it went very well. We had twenty-six of our new teachers come. It was really a great day. And some of them had to come to my office after they pick up their Chromebooks. So, teasingly, I said to them, because we still have JV soccer, which I believe we have one or two applicants for, as well as the middle school boy soccer position. Those are the two we need, as well as cheerleading, which the AD is interviewing for tomorrow. So, teasingly, as I would give them their Chromebook, I would say, "Before I give you the Chromebook, you interested in coaching?" Didn't work, but I tried. But we're doing pretty well. I think we'll be all set by next school committee meeting.
And you think with the coaching positions too for the fall sports that you just mentioned, we should be all set?
We should be all set. We are, Matt, AD Camp and Elliot, I don't know. Matt has been working very, very hard to recruit. We've been working really hard. And I believe that I just couldn't get all the information to you today and I don't want to do it last minute. So, I believe by our next meeting, which I think is September tenth, we'll have everyone appointed. So, we should be all set.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, School Committee Comments. School Liaison Reports. Chairman, Mr. Demodica.
Um, I'd just like to thank all the staff and the teachers who came out to give out the Chromebooks and stuff. They didn't have to do it. And I'm sure the community appreciated. I attended Mondays at McCourt with Dr. Masterson. It was a good turnout. And I think everyone is off to the next staff. Thank you.
Exciting. Mr. Dennan?
Yeah, I just want to echo those comments, but I also want to say that I went to North Cumberland's orientation early this week with my son, and it was great. It was very welcoming and everything was well-organized. So, good job, everyone.
Excellent. Mr. Fiorella. You've got more than nothing. All right. So, everyone have a great start to the first year. The first day of school, great success. Hope everyone gets to school on time, happy and healthy. And we have a great school year with our six-to-twelve Chromebook rollout. Nice. You won't be busy there, Mr. Chandler, will you? All right. Next item on the agenda, we do not have executive session.
No.
Thank you. And I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Demodica and Mr. Fiorella. Do I have a second by Mr. Dennan? Thank you. All those in favor? Those opposed? We are adjourned at eight sixteen. Thank you.